This is a special meeting of the Gainesville City Commission alongside our partners at Santa Fe College. And we have one item on the agenda, which is to have a discussion, keep it simple. So if I could have a motion to adopt our agenda, please.
Moved.
Moved by Santos, seconded by Ward, Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, sorry, our, no, Madam Clerk, you are here, our EO Director is out today.
Deputy Madam Clerk, yes.
Deputy, hello, how you doing?
Hi, everybody. So, okay, so we're ready. Commissioner Ariola, I think is absent. Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons. I believe is logging in, but we'll move on. Commissioner Hey Santos.
Aye.
Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously with Ariola and Simmons absent. So, thank you, Dr. Brody. It's been a long time overdue. Just to remind my colleagues, you took office officially on February 1, correct?
Yes.
So you got a nice month to orient yourself and then got hit with a global pandemic to figure out how to provide leadership at the college during those circumstances, as we all have been doing in our jobs. And so I know we had lots of exciting things planned. You and I had a big city tour planned to go check out different parts of the community and just help you orient yourself towards some of our challenges and some of our opportunities. And I know that you had many, just like that plan for lots of other folks and organizations. And we've, in the meantime, done all we can to keep the college moving forward, keep the city moving forward, and try to support our neighbors as best we can. So I know this isn't what you were hoping for as our first get together with yourself and the rest of the Commission and senior staff. But it's what we have right now, and we'll make the best of it and know that we'll have many more opportunities to, you know, spend time with one another in more intimate setting and getting sort of deeper into some of the opportunities that we have today. And I just want to say, point of personal privilege, it's so good to see all of my colleagues. Of course, I've been on campus teaching. I couldn't believe that when I was taking role today, that was, we were in our fifth week of the semester. But I still haven't really seen any of you or hung out with any of you, which is so unusual. So it's good to see all of your faces in one place, albeit virtually, and I'm having a great time. Very interesting semester, but I know that everyone that's out there is very appreciative of the steps that Santa Fe has gone to, to make it a safe environment and a supportive environment under really, really difficult circumstances. So just thank you for that while I have you all there. And with that, I will turn it over to my boss, Dr. Brody. He and I talked about a few different things that were probably of interest to us and to our community. But I think he also really wanted this to be an opportunity for folks to ask questions or share thoughts in a bit of an unstructured environment to build off of as we move forward. So, Dr. Brody, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor Poe, and thanks for everything that you're doing to keep the city moving, as well as the Commissioners. It's been an interesting time for our city and for our nation, and I think Gainesville has navigated it effectively and done an outstanding job, much like the college and the team that's before you from Santa Fe College has been instrumental in making sure that we keep our students safe and that we're also preserving that piece of our mission of access. So it's been important for us to make sure that we're providing access to our students. And what I really wanted to talk about today is furthering that mission and finding ways to partner very closely with the city to develop some initiatives, some groundbreaking initiatives, that provide people access to education that further capitalize on the strength of Santa Fe College and the strength of the city and that we can work together to make a difference in people's lives. If you look at the pandemic, it's had a significant impact on our unemployment rates. That's no secret, right? 2.7 in February, up to 6.7 currently. That's a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to step forward and to have a very strategic focus on workforce development. It's an opportunity for us to step forward and have a very strategic focus on getting people to access educational opportunities throughout the city. And it's also an opportunity for us to look for where those gaps are. And when I talk about gaps, I'm not really talking about equity gaps, I'm talking about access to gaps. So when we went remote, many, not many, some individuals couldn't access us because they didn't have access to the technology. And Dr. Brown, she'll talk a little bit about some of the initiatives put in place. But it's glaring that individuals in poverty may not be able to access our educational facilities the same way as other individuals, and we have to make sure that we equalize that as an institution and as a city. Also, there's individuals that are, found themselves unemployed. And there may be this thought that they can go back to the jobs when everything gets back to normal, but I'm pretty certain that some of those jobs will go away permanently, right? Some of those jobs will just leave, and for us, we need to find a way to help those individuals upskill or re-skilled, get re-skilled and get into either new jobs or new careers. So one of the things I want us to begin to really focus on and talk about are what initiatives are out there. We had a conversation with Commissioner Simmons, and she's introduced us to some opportunities. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Simmons, because Santa Fe stands ready to capitalize on those various opportunities, to build workforce, to get people back to work, to help people put their lives back together. The City Manager Feldman, I want to thank you because we had a conversation about policing and looking at our curriculum and finding ways to enhance our curriculum in collaboration with the city. So really, what I wanted us to talk about today is some of the initiatives, yes, that are occurring, like the Blunt Campus and some of those initiatives, but to really get deep down into what are we doing and what can we do? And how can we reach those individuals that need our services now more than ever before? So with that said, I'm going to introduce you to the team, and then we'll have some conversation around some of the things that I just talked about. I'm going to start with our Provost, Dr. Bonnhue, so I'll let you introduce yourself, and most of you probably know Dr. Bonnhue.
Hey, everyone. Ed Bonnhue, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs. And it's my pleasure to greet all of you on behalf of the faculty and also for everyone who works in workforce and economic development, because as a community college, one of our priorities is to be sure that our academic programs are aligned with local needs for economic development, for workforce training. And so I really look forward to our conversation today.
Lisa.
Good afternoon. Thanks for spending this time with us. I'm Lisa Armour. I'm the Vice President for Assessment and Technology. I facilitate strategic planning at the college. And for that reason, I'm very excited about this conversation. I also provide support for ITS. And so the technology needs in the community are of great interest to me. Institutional research is part of the division that I lead, and we look forward to knowing what the data are that would be really useful in decision-making around the community and to figure out how we can partner to make sure we all can have a good look at that.
Andy.
Hi, everybody. My name's Andy Barnes. I'm the VP for Administrative Services and the CFO. I arrived at Santa Fe on February the 12th, and I've been graciously welcomed by a very supportive team. And I just want to say thank you to each of them for that. We completed the budget cycle. And thanks to the college being managed in a fiscally conservative way, we're in a good place financially. That coupled with the stimulus money that we have, we're in a good place to manage the rest of this year and put plans together for the next year. Nice to meet you.
Patty.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Patty Locasio. I am Vice President and General Counsel. I will have been with the college for 20 years in January, if I make it that long, which I plan to. And I'm usually behind the scenes, so I will listen closely and take notes and stay behind the scenes possibly. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with y'all.
Thank you, Patty. Liam.
Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. My name's Liam McClay, and I am the Associate Vice President for Governmental Affairs and Facility Services. I've been here for about five years at the college. I run point in Tallahassee and try to advocate on behalf of our employees, as well as our board and our students. And right now, I'm also overseeing the Blunt Center expansion project downtown as part of my purview.
And Dr. Brown.
Good afternoon. I am Naema Brown, the Vice President for Student Affairs. And I work with my colleagues to ensure that students have the services that they need outside of the classroom so that they can be successful inside of the classroom. And so we are committed to ensuring that students have the financial support that they need, the mental health counseling support that they need, the engagement outside of the classroom, leadership development, the academic advising so that they can set their course and stay on track so that they can transfer or move into the workforce. We are working with students every day individually and as groups to help them reach their academic and career goals. I look forward to working with all of you, and I am always proud to say that Commissioner Simmons was my student some years ago.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Dr. Brown, we're gonna, we're gonna kick off with you, but there's some things I do want to mention. Individuals in our community and beyond are facing issues of healthcare. They're facing issues of food insecurity. They're facing issues of mental health. That's all coupled with unemployment. So as we have this conversation, it's not, education's not the only solution, but education's a critical piece of the solution to help people put their lives back together. I heard a presentation, what I had heard was 14%, there's been a 14% increase in suicide among African-American males. Right? So those are, our communities are very challenged, but I'm an optimist, if anyone who knows me. And I think if we get together and put our heads together, we can make a very significant difference, as we have over the years. When we got hit with the pandemic, Dr. Brown and her team put some very effective initiatives together. And I mentioned that we realized that individuals didn't have access to technology. Dr. Brown, I'm just going to ask you to talk about the laptop loaner program.
Yes, sir. The college purchased 300 laptops that we have lent out, and we have also started to lend out our surplus typically in a given year. After computers have been five years old, we surplus them, but our attorney had the great idea, why are we surplusing these computers this year per usual? Let's put them in the rotation to lend out. So that upped us to 345 computers that without those, students would not be able to successfully take their classes online. And in addition to that, we've secured another $15,000, and we will be purchasing 45 more laptops, bringing us up to a total of 390. This is in addition to the work that Dr. Armour's team has done to make sure that all of our centers, as well as this campus, is expanding the Wi-Fi so that students can use the parking lot, if need be, just to make sure that they are connecting. And so we were very proud to make that happen and to close the digital divide, because as Dr. Brody said, people experience this pandemic in different ways. Additionally, Dr. Brody, if I may, I'd like to share that the college received $3.9 million to give out an emergency aid. And as of today at noon, we've given $2,259 students emergency aid in the amount of 1.7 million so far. So we've still got 2.2 million, and we are in the process of calling every student who's enrolled at Santa to see how they're doing in this fifth week of the semester. And as we're calling them, we're letting them know that these federal funds are available for them. All they've got to do is apply and let us know or affirm that they have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. So this is something that we're very happy to do, and the students are applying. We're getting the word out, and we know that it won't be a problem getting the money into our students' hand. So those are, those are two of the COVID-19 initiatives that we have, that we have launched, that we're very proud that we can meet students where they are in this way. We have also changed our student services, as you've done for the city, so that in addition to the classes meeting through Zoom, we are meeting our students online and through the telephone. And there's some staff in the office that can't access technology, but for the most part, we are asking students, we can serve you where you are, and we've got digital lobbies that they can walk into. We also have Zoom rooms on campus where they can Zoom with the staff member that they need to avoid personal contact. So those are, those are some of the responses to COVID.
And I promise we're not going to monopolize the conversations. There's a few things that I want to make sure that we touch on before we open it up to open discussion. So we are, what was it, Liam? About three weeks ago, we began construction on the Blunt Campus.
About a month ago, we began demolition, and now we're going into the site work.
So we're very excited about the project. It's a project that's been in the making for a very long time, and we see, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. Now, I will say this, it's not, it's not enough for us just to build a Blunt Campus. We have to make sure that we're filling that campus with individuals that will come through those doors and leave better off than when they entered our doors. We know if we get a student into Santa Fe College and we get a student into our classrooms, that they're highly likely to succeed, as long as we keep them there. And I want to make sure that when we build the Blunt Campus, we're going to have the programs there. We're going to have the services there. We're going to have business and IT and a variety of wraparound support services. But if we don't get the community into our facility, if we don't get them in there to access our services, then we did not succeed. So I will really be working hard, we all will, but we need your support, right? We need everyone talking about the value of education right there in the Blunt Campus and the fact that an individual can complete their associate's degree, their bachelor's degree, they can get small business training. There's so many opportunities that will be provided right there in the community, and we want to make sure that individuals are there, that individuals are accessing those services. So, Ed, I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss it to you as our Provost to talk a little bit about the Blunt Campus.
Thanks, Dr. Brody. And as, as, as we've been able to share with some of you individually, we're so excited about the potential that the Blunt Campus carries for Gainesville. There are so many things that, for which it's already an asset, but it's going to be, as Dr. Brody said, even more of a force in the community. It will continue to be a full-service location for adult education, for prep classes, for general education. So for people just taking their first steps in higher education, or maybe because, maybe they need a GED, it will continue to serve that purpose. We're not going to lose that part of our, of our mission from the downtown campus. We will continue to be the home of a lot of community outreach activities, including, it'll continue to be the home for the foreseeable future of the East Gainesville Initiative, for example. And we will continue to serve those neighborhoods right around the Blunt Campus that have traditionally been underserved, and we want the Blunt Campus to be a center for all those neighborhoods, Fifth Avenue and Porters and Pleasant Street, and to the extent that we can always want to have community groups accessing the campus and meeting at the campus, we want to be able to continue to provide that service to the community. When the seed returns to Blunt Hall, right now it's housed at the UF Innovation Hub, we will continue to support business startups of all kinds. It's not just business startups that are kind of high-tech or that have intellectual property. It's all kinds of business startups from, we've had people successfully start up yard services and cleaning services, as well as high-tech companies and people making cellphone apps. And so that's an important contribution that we know we can make. The expanded campus, as Dr. Brody said, will offer more career-oriented opportunities in business and in our IT programs. And these will involve a ladder of educational opportunities from short-term certificates and continuing education programs up to our two-year degrees and our four-year degrees. A lot of these certificates and degree programs will be available on-site, some will be available online. And quite honestly, we're going to continue to need community support to figure out the best way to reach the entire community and to offer all of those classes and programs. We know that by relocate, relocating them from the Northwest Campus to the Blunt Campus, they're going to be much more convenient to downtown neighborhoods, to anyone who is working downtown or working at the university, and to anyone who's working in government and anyone in nearby businesses who's seeking to, as Dr. Brody said, upskill or re-skill or take the next step in their professional path. And we are going to continue to expand continuing education, as well as identify, we've already taken a lot of steps to identify pathways so that if you do some non-credit training or if you've done some on-the-job training, we make it possible for folks to convert that training into credit, into college credit. And we're certainly going to continue and expand that at the downtown campus as well. I think that's a thumbnail sketch, Dr. Brody, of everything that'll be going on downtown. Again, it's a lot of, we're going to continue the services that we've always provided and also expand kind of some of the workforce-facing functions so that people have greater access to those kinds of opportunities.
And if I may jump in here, just to say that the RTS bus route is instrumental in getting students from all parts of the city, especially East Gainesville, to the Blunt Center and out to this campus. So we appreciate that partnership that we've had, and we look forward to expanding in the future, but it's certainly instrumental in access.
Thank you, Dr. Brown and Dr. Bonnhue. These are my last few comments, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Dr. Bonnhue said workforce development. That is one of my major focuses as President. If you think about it, our trades, our workforce development programs, and I'll just read some numbers to you. Construction Management Technology has a 95% job placement rate of our students. The one-year certificate in air conditioning and refrigeration has an 85% job placement rate among our students. The welding program has a 90% job placement rate among our students. And plumbing, the plumbing certificate, is a 100% job placement rate. So if we are deliberate, we can help people reach the middle class. These are high-skill, high-wage jobs. We can help people reach the middle class. If they want to continue their education, we can provide that opportunity. We can provide that opportunity all the way through a degree at UF, because we still transfer students at a very high rate to UF, and we're very strong partners with UF. But we have to give people that opportunity to, A, break into the middle class and then continue their educational studies. So it's, I had said to a group, I think it was last week, we're not a one-dimensional institution. We're a very diverse institution with diverse programs and services, associate's degrees, bachelor's degrees, certificate programs, continuing education opportunities. And we want to make sure that the community understands every single opportunity that's available to them so that they can reach the middle class, so that we can break cycles of poverty, and so that we can help people advance their lives. With that said, one thing to think about, the governor charged our state with being number one in workforce education. The governor also said 60% of working adults should have a post-secondary degree. And I just wonder, I don't wonder, how we can work together to make sure that we are helping people reach that middle class, that we're helping people have that post-secondary degree, those that maybe started with us that need to get re-engaged. We're going to re-engage them. It's important for us as a group to be strong partners. So look at grants. Let's look at some grants for maybe a re-entry population grant so that those people don't re-offend, they get access to education, they don't re-offend, and they become productive members of society, contributing to our economy. So with that said, I just want to open it up for conversation.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brody, and thank you, everyone from Santa Fe who shared your thoughts and sort of updated us on where things are going. And I don't see any hands up right now, so I'll start off with sort of a split, sort of, it's not a split incentive, but a disconnect in what's available and a population that we would hope to serve. And so a few years ago, I was touring our fleet maintenance facility and having a good discussion with the director, and he was lamenting. And and he was lamenting, one of the real challenges that he had was hiring enough folks to work out there. He couldn't, he couldn't, and they're good-paying jobs. And he couldn't find them and he couldn't keep them because because they're in short supply everywhere. And so they were constantly getting uh sort of picked off and and hired by by someone else um in in the southeast, not you know, not just Gainesville or Latshaw County. Uh, and so I convened a meeting with a bunch of folks from Santa Fe and you know, Tom, I remember Tom Mason was there. And we said, well, couldn't we figure out a program where we bring people up through Santa Fe, get them trained, guarantee them an apprenticeship at at City Fleet Maintenance? Um, some of them will then go on to other jobs, but we'll be able to surely retain uh enough of those folks to fill out our workforce needs just at the city of Gainesville. So we got this big meeting together, lots of folks that were really enthusiastic. And then we're walking out of the meeting and Tom, uh being Tom, being very forthright and honest, uh just took his head and said, Lauren, I've been in that meeting a dozen times since the time I've been in Santa Fe. Um, one of the problems we have in our community is we constantly hear folks talking, especially in relation to our K-12 system. Not everyone's gonna go to college. We need to provide um vocational and technical education to to these uh young people coming through our our public school system. And I've sort of constantly beat my head against the the wall on that because we have that. We have that at Santa Fe. We 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 have the ability to serve all of those folks in that capacity without the public schools standing up a bunch of infrastructure uh um that's very expensive to do, very expensive to to do the certification and training ongoing, duplication of what we already have here in Gainesville. And and this isn't about me or my program, but but we have the dual enrollment program that would give people entry and access, starting in high school and then being able to matriculate through, you know, whether it's certi- certificate program or or all the other opportunities that you have. And and so I say all that to say, one of our challenges, Paul, is is um marketing and and outreach and communication. And and helping at a critical point in their in their academic life, I don't know if that's seventh, eighth grade, right there at ninth grade when they're starting to make longer-term decisions. But how we bridge the opportunities that Santa Fe provides to our younger neighbors, many of whom are struggling, are caught in that cycle of poverty, and and need a little extra guidance and uh attention to make sure that they sort of get placed where it is they want to be. And then, you know, once, we do a great job at Santa Fe of, you know, once they're there, following up and making sure that they're being successful and making sure they they achieve their goals. But they've gotta, they've gotta get in and and placed first. And, you know, I feel like we have everything in our community to do that, except we haven't been able to to communicate the the opportunity and 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 follow through with it to get those those numbers up to where I think that they very much could be. So I think that's a challenge for all of us to work on. Um, but a good one, because again, we're not reinventing the wheel. It's more just matching up those in need with this with the resources that that Santa Fe already provides. Um, so that's just uh one of the um things that I've noticed that we could do better over the years collectively. Um, Commissioner Simmons, you have some thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Dr. Brody and and your team for um having this meeting as much needed. And I wanted to um echo some of the um things that Mayor Poe just stated. And I was gonna suggest that too, is is um we have a marketing issue. Um, we have a real disconnect as it relates to communication. And I think for a number of years, um, Santa Fe College, even though it was the Northwest Campus, it was almost like an island. And you brought the downtown center in. And once that center was there, I think it it ca- it got kind of stagnant, if you will. Um, it it was nothing to say, nothing bad to say. It just, I believe, it just lost um in in it it just lost some of the 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 oomph, I think, that they needed to continue making that that heavy impact that I believe that was their intentions in the beginning. Um, I it's almost like it ran up against a brick wall for whatever reason, I don't know, but we're here now. And I think what we need to do as a partnership and as a a relationship with the city and um Santa Fe College is to start communicating together, communicating uh collect one consistent message. And that message needs to be very clear and it needs to be deliberate so it can reach the population of folks that we're trying to reach. Um, I was so happy to hear you talk about the access gap because I think for a while now, that has not been um a priority or a high conversation where we talk about access. We talk about everything else, but we talk, we do not, in my opinion, talk about access like we should or the lack thereof like we should. Uh, we all, we we all know, um, everybody on this call except maybe a few staff members know the history of Gainesville. Uh, we we know what we're dealing with, we know the infrastructure, we know the demographics, we know who we're trying to reach. And I think what's been left out of that conversation is access. And I think when you talk about um the increase in suicide with African-American males, that says a lot, that's very telling. And I think if we focus on how we can accurately, consistently, deliberately deliver one message from us because we're stronger together. And if we can deliver that message, um, whatever that message looked like, but also in doing so, be strategic in how we promote and who we look for and how we try to 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 um build on the future. We looking at um um s- smart technology. And you mentioned that that's something you're gonna be focused on. We look at how now that our cars are being built with smart technology. We looking at now um how our highway systems are gonna be built. So I think we need to start looking forward-thinking on how we can start getting ahead of the curve, start putting different things in place to start having these programs at our at 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 the college. And Mayor Poe, you're absolutely right, as we talk about K through twelve. Why should we reinvent the wheel when we have a perfect, good asset in Santa Fe College to host all these different programs, um to be that conduit for the uh the K through twelves and and to get 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 our students or get our residents to that middle-class wages? Um, one thing that I wanted to really talk about, and when we talk about access, and I've talked to Dr. Brody and his team in the in the past couple of months, is that the um access to healthcare in East Gainesville. And that's something that I've been working with with several other members in the community to um and also with um Commissioner Harvey Ward, looking at ways that we can um address that particular issue. And I think having Santa Fe College as a partner and trying to look at ways that we can make an impact in East Gainesville as it relates to healthcare, um by not only providing healthcare services, but looking at maybe having your students um out in East Gainesville in in some in some we in some location. And when I say students, maybe have some type of classes uh where folks can come and get educated on healthcare. Um, if we can have different type of programs, just a a gamut of of things that's in the healthcare field. Um, I think that's gonna be something that's going to help uh could help our residents stay healthy to get a job. I think that's important. Um, like again, you talked about the uh the suicide rate. Um, w- we need to focus on the healthcare of our residents, not only physical but mental health so we can get them to a place where they feel comfortable and become a success in whatever careers they choose to do. And so I think that's something that the city of Gainesville, along with um Santa Fe, um, looking at how we can really address the healthcare issues in East Gainesville. And that that's a high priority, high priority for me. Um, and I'm wanting Santa Fe to um at some capacity partner with the city in this endeavor um to really go out into the community in East Gainesville and and help those residents that need this help in East Gainesville as it relates to health. But as I look at where we are now, Santa Fe, um, Dr. Brown, she was what, she was my professor. And so here I am now, looking at this from all kinds of lenses. I was a student, um, I live in the Porters community, I am a city commissioner. So I can view this partnership through all type of lenses, as a student, as a resident, and as a policymaker. And so what I would like for us to do is to take advantage of the relationship and the partnership that we have, um, move forward on certain projects like healthcare, um, work fit workforce, job opportunities. And I think now is the perfect time that we can start establishing a long-lasting um partnership in a um in a on a on another level, if you will. I think now we're turning the corner. I think we have the right people in place. I think we have great minds to come up with different type of programs, partnerships, policies, whatever we need to do to uplift this community and get it where it needs to be. And so I am certainly um uh up for the task. And I am here to help you, Dr. Brody, and your ta- your team, whatever you need me to do. Um, but I I really would like for us to come up with a uh a marketing campaign that's very um consistent. And I think it has to connect to the residents so we can start getting the message out, and the earlier the better. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Simmons. Go ahead, Paul.
We we've already written your name down, Commissioner Simmons. You're
And and possible to to piggyback in terms of partnerships going forward, I see that in Tacoma and in Chicago, there have been partnerships between the city and the community college in terms of housing. And so whether it's providing residents of public housing with scholarships, tuition, and books to go to college or for uh to provide students from the local area with low income because student housing is very expensive, especially for students. And so coming from uh an environment in a single-parent family in a housing project myself, I know that there are issues uh just in terms of being in the environment. Some sometimes uh the student is going to need housing assistance and encouraging people who are living in that level perhaps of poverty that there's an opportunity and we want to assist you in becoming uh 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 or in getting a higher standard of living. So there are some partnerships out there and perhaps we can partner on grant funding to uh look to that in the future. I would be very interested.
Right? Yeah, that's a good suggestion. I think we should uh pull um Gazel Housing Authority and Pam Davis in on that, too. I think she would um be a good person to get involved in that conversation. I love that idea that um Dr. Brown just just mentioned there with the the scholarship support. Um, okay, up next we have Commissioner Areola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you, Dr. Brody, and all of your team for being here. Um, I really feel like uh this meeting is uh is really the beginning of greatness uh for our two institutions. Because what what we know about our institutions are that we have so much expertise and so so much ability and so many people who've been empowered to do great work that now what we have to do as policymakers and decision-makers formalize uh that partnership and formalize sort of the 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 groundwork for how we move forward. And um so I'm just gonna touch on on a few points that I think would be key here. Um, and and some of that has already been made by by some of my colleagues. First is that, you know, the question is always, what can we do together? And I think the way that we allow for our institutional expertise and knowledge to really flourish is by sort of letting it happen a little bit organically, sort of similar to how some of these conversations have gone. We allow, you know, every, you know, most of our uh respective staffs and whatnot, you know, this is, they call this community home. And so they are aware of these problems, as we mentioned before. And so what's gonna happen is by allowing our two staffs to sort of have that formal partnership, when ideas come up, they can go through our respective institutional um sort of processes, but then they can collaborate with one another as they're working through the process. Um, but with that, what we're gonna have to do is, as we come up with new ideas for partnership, we're gonna need new policies to guide those partnerships forward, not just to get them started, but then also to sort of um help them evolve along the way. Um, so a lot has been mentioned uh about our youth. And uh as was introduced in the General Policy Committee a few weeks ago on the City Commission, if the city had a youth development policy, it could help guide some of our potential programs and services that we could work with Santa Fe because it would guide, well, if the city interacts with our youth in this way, clearly Santa Fe can do a lot better job with um curricular activities and other types of 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 services than the city than the city government could. And so it would be, it would behoove us to s- to sort of help you all in that way. Um, but we need a policy to direct that because without without policy, you know, we run the risk of having conversations that uh that are that just stay like that. Um, so I think we really need to to look at that formal partnership. And and I'll leave that to to our mayor, to our manager, um, to the president uh and your vice presidents to figure out how best to to form that language. Um, because I think it is really uh something that's that could be foundational going forward. Um, and then, of course, there are things that the city can can do for Santa Fe that would be really beneficial. Um, uh, for example, how can we sort of uh, you know, help with uh uh community reinvestment in areas around uh where Santa Fe is gonna be investing? And how can we assist you all in 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 those missions? Um, so really, I think what I want to focus on here is a a formal partnership, a formal strategic partnership. Um, because that, in my view, will will authorize both of our institutions and our leaders to begin to think about how do we start to create policy under that strategic umbrella um to focus on the various issues that we all agree on that are issues that we can that we can work towards. Um, and I think that uh, you know, that can be done. You know, we can talk about RTS, we can talk about workforce development, public health. All of that can be spoken under that strategic umbrella um so that, you know, uh, the whole point, I think, of 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 formalizing these policies is because leaders change frequently. Um, and so what we need to do is make sure that no matter who is 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 leading these organizations, that these kinds of partnerships are formal and that they're expected going forward uh so that in five or ten or fifteen years, people can look back and say, you know, uh, we're able to do more now than they could ten years ago because we built capacity for these programs. We built capacity within the institutions. Um, and that's and that takes time, that takes time, that takes dedication, that takes resources, resources that can't always be spent in one year or even two years, but it takes time. Um, so I'm really encouraged by this. Um, it's good to see y'all's faces again, it's been a while. Um, I certainly wish that we were uh in in uh in better circumstances. But um I know that in Gainesville, we've made the most of a very, very difficult situation uh in this country and in the world. So thank you all for your leadership. Appreciate you being here, appreciate you sharing your ideas and listening to this commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Sacco, we have you next.
Sir, um, so one, it's great to meet all of you and put like faces to names and titles. So that was a wonderful intro, so thank you for that. Um, one thing that I think we could partner on, um, I agree with Commissioner Simmons on the marketing angle. Um, it it really, I think having that reputation and having it be common knowledge is what can really help um elevate some of our families. And I'm speaking from personal experience with Miami Dade College, where it was known in our community that if you did the dual enrollment program, if you applied to any of their programs as a young adult, um, it was it was almost guaranteed that you could elevate your status economically, that it was a good program and that it does um benefit you. And so one of the things that I think we could definitely help partner on other than marketing or any communication strategy is um on transit. Because I recall that my mother could take me to class and she could take my sisters, but there were a multitude of students who simply didn't have that transportation option. Um, and we were considered lucky because we were near the main campus. But if your class was at the wrong campus or was too far away, you either had to try to take our transit system you either had to try to take our transit system, which in Miami is a, a different animal altogether, but, um, or you just couldn't apply for those classes. Uh, and that just wasn't, um, certain classes to get graduate with your AA just weren't possible because you could never physically attend those classes. So I don't know if, um, this is me admitting what I don't know. I don't know if Santa Fe does any in-person classes at the schools. You do?
Yeah, uh, oh, you mean at the, uh?
At the high schools.
At the high schools? Uh, no, correct it?
No, we do not. Our, our high, we've expanded our high school dual enrollment model so that it's a lot more diverse than it was at one time. But, um, but our model has been one where we're, we're trying to provide access, um, uh, to something, uh, something different, something that they're not getting on the high school campus. Um, and so our model has been one where we offer it at a Santa Fe campus.
And so that's, that's what I thought. So I just didn't want to assume, but it's what I thought, thank you. Um, whether if it's, if it's something that we could look into adding bus routes or adding the hubs that they are near the high schools at certain hours so that they can, um, be taken to the main campus or even to the, uh, once it's finished, the Blunt Center. Um, if that's a dedicated route at certain hours or an additional route with our pilot program that we hope to expand, with the first mile, last mile to get kids closer to it. Because that was always, in my experience, the difficulty for my classmates. Um, and just having that as a matter of, I don't have someone to drive me for 10, 15 minutes, is what's keeping me from graduating with all of this experience and this education. That's just, that's absolutely unfair, that that's the only difference. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we can look into with RTS to see if there's some kind of pilot program. Um, I don't know, um, you know, I, I know some of your classes are still happening in person, so it could be a long-term project to look at for when more students are in person. But that is something that I think the city can offer and we can partner on, uh, very easily. But knowing now that you don't do in person, I will say, having some of those courses available in person, where a professor would go for the hour or the two-hour to teach the class, really made it accessible to a lot of my classmates. Um, that, um, they partnered with the high school that I was at and they made it so that, you know, you're all here, your, your county school bus brought you here, your parents brought you in the morning. It makes it that much more feasible, you just stay an extra half hour, classes clear out, then there is a professor that'll mind you. Um, and it was only for the students. So while you do get a different experience going to the campus, I think it made it much more accessible, um, to this predominantly Hispanic African-American community to just have the teachers come to us. Um, and it was, I think they had two or three courses every semester that were available on campus. So you, you may not get to the full AA, but you are getting some of those credits already through dual enrollment. Um, that's based on personal experience, I don't know how useful you might find that. But, um, I wanted to provide that as a suggestion. But I definitely want to see how we can help with the marketing and with some of the transit options to make sure kids can get to the campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor Poe, is there anyone else?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, my pain, oh, there you go, uh, Commissioner Ward, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Brody and Santa Fe staff, thank you for, for creating this opportunity. Um, I'm glad that, that we have this. I, I will tell you, in the almost three and a half years that I've been on the commission, this is the first time that we've had this kind of dialogue. Um, so I appreciate that. And I want to point out too, that i- if not, that the City Commission has a, a quorum, if not a super majority of, um, of members who have AAs from Santa Fe, I believe. So that there's a, a strong connection here already, including myself. The, in many ways, our community takes, has taken Santa Fe College for granted. We're, we're proud of, of Santa Fe being a, a, a top college, but we, we have often taken it for granted. And we often, as a commission, don't think about Santa Fe first in, in, in many things that, that we should. Because frankly, you're, you're 83 blocks west and, you know, 30-some blocks north of, of City Hall. And, and being outside the city has been a barrier to, to many things with, with the community. That's going to change, you know, starting in, uh, in, uh, spring of, of 22, I think. Uh, you know, when, when there is a, a much larger presence. Not that I don't appreciate the, the presence of the Blunt Center over, over the years, but that's really going to change, you know, as, as the footprint is harder to miss on, on Sixth Street. You know, when you're, when you're seven blocks away from City Hall instead of 83, that's going to change. Um, a- and I, I think that there are opportunities and programs that are going to start becoming organically obvious to Santa Fe leadership and city leadership as we move forward that are not obvious right now. Um, as, as you become physically harder to miss in the heart of the city, there are going to be things that happen and programs that just, uh, are, become obvious that, you know, gosh, why didn't we think of that earlier on both sides of, of, of the fence in this? And, you know, there, there are a lot of, of things I, I could, um, ideas that, that we could throw out there today. But I, I, I think what we're going to see and what's most important is, is seeing that organic growth of, of partnership and ideas, programs that are going to happen almost certainly as the Santa Fe footprint increases in the heart of Gainesville. So thank you once again for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Santos. We've only got about five minutes left, so I want to give Dr. Brody a chance to, um, conclude or, or ask any follow-up questions before we have to go. Uh, Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, it works out, I have to leave in one minute anyway. Um, so Dr. Brody and then staff, thank you very much for, for being here. Um, I'm also one of those, uh, Santa Fe students, I got my degree, uh, AA at Santa Fe and also dual enrolled, um, there as well. Um, so yeah, I think many of the things that were said by fellow commissioners, uh, I am excited about what you're expanding to at the Blunt Center. Um, I do think the, the thought about building housing that might be available to more people, definitely specifically in that area. Um, you do all, do have some land in that area, so I think that would be, uh, definitely very interested in if you wanted to expand on that. Um, I think there's another, also another opportunity that is, uh, the digital divide and the expansion of broadband and making sure that everyone has that and, um, both being able to access classes, but also job training and, and being a, be a part of society is a major thing. So it's one of the things the city is looking at, and I think the Santa Fe College could be a great partner in that. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and maybe, uh, Commissioner, uh, we, we should send a specific invite to, um, Santa Fe administration to the next, uh, Digital Access Committee meeting, um, just to kind of get caught up. But there's been a lot of work the city's been doing for more than two years now on, uh, started out as universal broadband access, but it's expanded a little bit to digital access. And, uh, you know, that's something that certainly i- is a need, as we've learned during COVID-19, of our, our student population at Santa Fe, but also an opportunity for, for how Santa Fe can, um, help with that, that, you know, that, building that access. And, uh, it's, it's also something that would be a great, uh, three-way partnership or even four-way partnership between us, the university, Santa Fe, and the school system. Um, because you, you asked very involved and very interested in how that could help their, uh, student population as well. So, yeah, I think there's some real opportunity there. Um, Commissioner Simmons, were you okay? You wanted, did you want to say something or, or?
Yeah, just briefly, um, Harvey Ward, Commissioner Ward stated that we always, well, we oftentimes think about Santa Fe, not the first or maybe last, but that's not true. Commissioner Ward, I think about Santa Fe all the time. I wish I could go back to my Santa Fe days. So I just wanted to tell you, I think about Santa Fe all the time.
Well, I tell my students as they're trying to make decisions, uh, about what they do when they graduate, high school, graduate from the program, that one of the biggest regrets I have was going straight from GHS to UF. Um, I would have been a much better student, a much better person if I would have gone to Santa Fe for, uh, my AA and, and then gone to UF. Um, and, and so I'm, uh, and we do have a tremendous amount of our students from dual enrollment that just stay. It's not their intention when they enter dual enrollment, but by the time they're done, they don't want to go anywhere else. They want to stay right there at Santa Fe and finish their AA and then figure out what they want to do. So it's, it's, uh, it's quite a family and quite a culture that's been developed over the years, uh, out there. Um, Dr., uh, any thoughts? It sounds like we have lots of things that, uh,
Yes.
follow up on, we have lots of potential, um, that, that has yet to be fully realized, but I think this is a good start. So I'll let you conclude, uh, any thoughts that you might have.
So I, I want to, I want to thank you, uh, commissioners, I want to thank my team. Uh, this meeting is everything I expected and more. And I think someone said, it, this is the start of a great, great partnership. Um, and we'll make sure that we capitalize on every opportunity that comes before us. I, I do think, um, some, some policy around a strategic partnership would be, uh, a very, very good start. And then we can build from there. Uh, I think, um, uh, Mayor Poe, uh, you and I can, can kind of get in, get on the phone and kind of strategize based on some of the things that we've heard as to the, the best next steps. Um, but, but I'm very interested, we are very interested in making sure that we're side by side, shoulder to shoulder with the city. And I, I loved it, Commissioner Simmons, a unified, very clear message, right? That, so that's, it, it's, it's beyond marketing. It's a very clear, unified message to our entire community. And I think together we will bring, not think, I know, together we'll bring about some significant impact to the residents of, of Gainesville. So I'm looking forward to it and, and I thank you for taking this hour with us and having a, what I consider a wonderful conversation.
All right, thank you very much. Um, and thank you, everybody who, who participated in it being. Everybody now will get together and try to, and, uh, we'll follow up and, and, and hopefully, uh, start, uh, putting some formality behind what, what we have, uh, agreed upon. So thank you all very much. And, uh, with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned and I'll see half of you on campus. Bye.
Take care.